Thank you all for being here tonight. This is our January the 2nd, 2025, New Year, Planning Commission, Bowling Green, Warren County Planning Commission Meeting. Matthew, if you'd call the roll, please.
Commissioner Drain?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Vitale? Commissioner Volker?
Yes, sir.
Chair Warren?
Yes, sir. Commissioners, you have the minutes of our December the 5th meeting in your packet. Are there any questions? Hearing none, we'll call for a motion, please.
Go move. Second. Commissioner Volker?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Drain?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, sir.
Chair Warren?
Yes, sir. Commissioners, you have the subdivision site development plans in your packets that were mailed. Are there any questions? Okay, hearing none. No new business tonight, Mr. Peterson?
Yes, sir.
All right. We will now enter into our public hearing. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Warren. I request that you order the record tonight include all relevant statutory and regulatory provisions, the commission's entire file for each application on tonight's docket, and the qualifications of staff witnesses. Finally, I request that you administer the oath to those witnesses.
Y'all swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. We have no old business. We now enter into our public hearing. Our first item tonight is 2024 59Z County Firm Lineage LLC, care of David Eubank and Leslie Ellis, have filed an application to rezonate 29.92 acres located at 2965 Plano Road from Ag to RS1, single-family residential with a general development plan. Rachel, before you get started, would you put the, our protocol back up so for all the people in the audience? So, for you all that are here tonight to hear these two public hearings, how this works, you can see it on the screen, that our staff makes a presentation about the proposed development, then they're, the applicants have 15 minutes to answer any related questions from the commissioners, and then we will, their representative will, can ask some more questions or answer any of the staff's questions. And then we end, we enter into the public hearing. So if we, everybody here has three minutes to make their presentation for any questions of the applicant that they have, and then the applicant has three minutes for a closing hearing. So, thank you so much, Rachel.
No problem. First application of the year. Actually, it was filed last year. It's one of last year's cases, but first meeting this year, so happy new year to everybody. We had a pre-application meeting back in October for the property located at 2965 Plano Road, and the applicants have requested to rezonate the property in order to rezonate the land from agriculture to RS1D, which is single-family residential, in order to develop a maximum of 88 building lots. This is the current aerial view for the property, and you can see that the current zoning is agriculture, the current land use is also agriculture, and the future land use designation is low-density residential. We have some property photos for your reference. I'll flip through those. This is the current home that's on the property. This is the view looking across Plano Road, on the east side of Plano Road. And then this is on the backside of the property, looking east toward Plano Road, at the end of Esteb Street in Wyndham Estates. And that's the view from the property looking into Wyndham Estates. And then we'll leave the concept plan up here for reference. We can jump back to any of the maps or pictures as needed. In our review of the application, we did find that the applicants have complied with a majority of the review criteria in, in the review process, and we did find that it's generally compatible with the surrounding area. We did have a few items that we wanted to point out for your consideration in the staff report. The first of those items being on page two. Under prime farmland, we've noted that a majority of the property is designated as prime farmland or farmland of statewide importance. Touching on historical features just beneath that, we've noted that the existing residence was constructed in 1880, though it is not a locally or nationally historically designated property, and the applicants are proposing to demolish the existing residence in order to accommodate the proposed development. However, the applicant did agree that prior to demolition of the existing home on the property, it shall be made available for local fire departments for training services, and that salvageable materials shall be made available to Habitat for Humanity Restore or other similar nonprofit. And then on page three, looking at proposed open space, we've noted that the maximum lot coverage permitted in the proposed RS1D zone is 75%, meaning that a minimum of 25% of each lot will remain as open space, and the applicants are not proposing any additional open space or formal residential amenities that will serve the proposed development. I believe that is all I was going to touch on in the staff report. Our recommendation is for approval pending public hearing testimony and discussion. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Rachel. Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Hurt? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is the applicant here or their representative?
Thank you, Chairman Warren. Tad Pardue, 1010 College Street. I swear to tell the truth.
Thank you, Ted.
Good evening, Commissioners. Happy new year. It's good to see you all and be before you again. I'm here this evening on behalf of the applicant, which is Firm Lineage LLC. Their authorized representative that's here with me tonight is Barrett Hammer. Also, Lucas Slavy is here, the engineer for the project. I guess what I would say to you introductory-wise is, you know, this proposed development is primarily planned to satisfy a need. We are aware of the studies, the housing studies that have been done in Warren County, and the type of development, the type of homes, the size of homes, the quality of homes in this development are designed to strike right at or fulfill the need for the most, the type of housing that is lacking in the community the most, and that is those sort of starter-range homes, 14 to 2,000 to 2,200 square feet. With that, I want to point out or just highlight a few of the things that are contained in the staff report that you, as commissioners, may want to draw your attention to. Again, this is basically 30 acres, 88 lots. It is without question compliant with the flume. That's the first standard or lens through which you are to review this application. The future land use designation is low-density residential. This fits squarely within the density requirements of, that are permissible in low-density residential. You'll find that in the, in its site review, the staff found all utilities and transportation infrastructure were sufficient to support this development unequivocally and without hesitation. Site design and compatibility. I know that there are folks that are here this evening who have some concerns with or objections to this proposed development. It's my understanding some of those concerns focus on lot size. When you look at lot size, you look at density of the proposed development. The density of this proposed development is 2.94 dwelling units per acre. You'll see in the comprehensive plan that it determined within a 1,000-foot radius of this development, the median density is 2.13 dwelling units per acre. As you all probably know, HN 1.2 section in the comprehensive plan sets forth or defines what is necessarily compatible in terms of density within 1,000 square feet, and that is a density within 50% of what's, within 1,000 square feet, and, and we meet that For reference purposes, some densities of other residential developments in this general area, you have Kingston Point, which is 2.42 dwelling units per acre. You have the Heritage, which is actually another development that was done by Mr. Hammer. That is 3.96 dwelling units per acre. You have Plano Estates, which is 2.43, and you have the Vinings, which is 3.39. Again, we're 2.94. We're right in that zone of densities of similar or comparable residential developments in this area of Plano or Plano Road. Home sizes, you'll see in our development plan conditions that we have a minimum home size heated and cooled living space of 1,400 square feet. You'll see also in the staff report, the minimum home sizes in adjacent developments. You have the development just to the south. Let's see. If I can find it here. Yeah, the Wyndham, the Wyndham development just to the south also requires a minimum square footage of 1,400 square feet, requires at least a one-car detached, or sorry, attached garage. You'll note that in our development plan conditions for this, for this property, we have proposed 1,400 square feet with a minimum two-car attached garage. And then building materials, I do want to call your attention to that. The building materials that we have proposed do include a limitation on vinyl. I'll note that the staff in its site review did find that the majority, if not most, of the homes in the Wyndham Estates development do have exterior facades that consist entirely of vinyl. We have agreed to limit that, and that no more than 30% of the homes in the development will have front facades of all vinyl, and that would be about, I think, 25 or 26 of the maximum of 88. Ultimately, you'll see in the staff report, the staff determined that this proposed development satisfied all seven applicable policies that are required of it in the Plano Focal Point Plan. You'll also find that as it relates to comprehensive plan provisions for the flume, traffic, tree preservation, infrastructure, use, design standards, size, and density, the staff determined that this application was in compliance with all of those. Hence, the staff's determination on page seven of the report, the proposed lots are located in a flume-compliant location or of comparable size and density when compared with lots in the vicinity. If approved, the proposal will result in additional building lots and housing opportunities in the community. Those are the highlights that I was hoping to emphasize to you all this evening as commissioners. This is, as it's proposed, a development that is needed in this area of Warren County. It is, through development plan conditions, a quality-type development, and we would respectfully ask for your approval this evening. We'll entertain any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Pardue.
Commissioners, any questions for the applicant or their representative?
Ted, I got a couple things. One, I think the application looks good with all the things you put in there, which I appreciate. It doesn't mention an HOA. Is there an, did I miss that?
Yeah, it's one of the last development plan conditions.
Sorry.
That's okay.
You get old, your eyes go bad.
It's actually the number 10.
10.
Sorry. Okay. And then, so, we're saying 70% of the houses could be all vinyl. Is what, is that what you're saying? You're saying 30 won't?
It's, 30 won't have a front facade consisting of all vinyl.
But 70% of all the houses could all be vinyl?
I don't read it that way.
Yeah.
I don't read it that way.
That's not.
Actually, 70% of the houses would have.
Have to have something other than vinyl.
Okay, so only 30, okay, that's right. So only 30% could be all vinyl. Perfect. Thank you.
The rest, Commissioner Volker, I guess conceivably could have vinyl on sides and rear, but it would have to have a front facade that was something other than vinyl.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christian. Any other questions for the, Mr. Pardue?
Dean Warren, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
We've been handed some photos related to flooding. I guess my question is, and this is a concern that I have, it seems like an awful lot of water that's being run off on other people's property. Is, is the engineer addressed, have they addressed that or prepared to address that?
Mr. Starks, why don't we just let the engineer come up and talk about that, because I think that's going to be a couple of questions in the audience tonight.
I do as well.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
I have a couple more questions. Do you want to go ahead and do this first or come back to that?
Sit, hang on, Lucas. Go ahead.
So, just a couple more questions, Ted, on the, on the DPC. So, also, it says that, so, no two houses side by side will be all vinyl? Am I reading that correct?
Will have the same front elevation.
Will have the same front elevation. Okay.
There was a, there was, I believe, a provision in the Plano Focal Point that put an emphasis on having varying types of front elevations in a, in a block, I guess, a neighborhood block.
Got it.
Just to try to keep varying types of houses and designs in the, in the development.
And so, the, the last one is, I want to make sure I'm reading this right. I think what, what they're asked, what he's asking for, or what I, I should say, what your client is asking for, is the option to do either a crawl space foundation with brick veneer or a slab foundation.
Six inches.
With a scratch coat, but no more than six inches of that showing.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
And if you'll, you might recall Commissioner Graham, that there was a.
Yeah, we had one, not two.
Proposal before this commission in November, I believe, and I, I can't take credit for that, that development plan condition, because that was something that came out of dialogue between.
Yeah.
The applicant and the commission, and that was something that the commission wanted to see, and that, that was the, the Hargit property on Nashville Road. I think there were some zero-lot line homes proposed there, and I guess that was where that, that arose from.
Yeah, and I recall that. It has to be a, it has to be a very flat lot in order to make it economical, but if you only have six inches of that showing, then, then I get that. And then the last question is, so these will have two-car attached garages, all of them, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, very good. That's all I have, Ted.
Commissioners, any, hang on just a second, Ted. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Graham. Any other questions? Ted, if you would call Lucas up here and.
Lucas Slavy, 2519 Kenbell Boulevard, Bowling Green, Kentucky.
You swear to tell the truth, Lucas?
Yes, sir.
Would you tell the audience tonight your role in this and, and your qualifications and what you do?
Yes, sir. I'll, I'll be the site civil engineer, and I, I was a site civil engineer for the Kingston Point project as well as the Heritage project. And, yeah, it is, it is my job to make sure that the property doesn't flood, and I do, I haven't seen those pictures, but if I had to guess, it's probably in 2017 in February. Is that right? 2018 February, and the project was not, didn't have any grass on it at the time, did it? It, it come, one of the wettest February's on record, if my, if I'm recalling right, and there was no grass cover on the project, and it, the reason I told Mr. Thompson that nothing would come on the property is all of the piping, all of the retention, and everything flows the opposite way away from his property. And I, I probably took some of those pictures on my phone as well. I think it happened just a random fluke before the, everything was done and stabilized, and I, I haven't heard that it's ever happened again since then. It was a, during construction kind of storm, and certainly wouldn't stand here and tell him something that I didn't think was true. But this project, it, so, so he's, he's kind of in the middle of both of these. He's there in those, where the yellow is in between those two, his property lies in. That project was on the low side of him. Now, there's not a lot of fallout there. If you stood there, it's one contour flat that runs across the back of all those properties, so it's very, very flat back there. So, in that particular project, we were accepting all the water, pushing it to the other side of that Royal Court on the opposite side, and there's overflow that discharges across the, underneath Plano Road to the school, to a big sinkhole at the back of the school. This property, the, the game plan is with drainage, we're gonna, we're gonna have to hold right at three-acre feet of water to maintain the current runoff. So essentially, what that equates to, if I've got three acres, I'm gonna have to hold a foot of water over those whole three acres. Because we're on the upper side of them, we're not gonna be able to dig deep, we're gonna have to build a berm between us and him where that water can't go to him. And the plan is to discharge it toward the back. There's a kind of swampy area. You can see it in the, in some of the pictures. That, that woods, and it, it stays pretty swampy all in that back part. So the plan is to build up the lots, create a recessed area in the back, top right-left corner, and build a berm on the lower side between us and Mr. Thompson's property, and discharge it straight to the back at a, at the rate it's going now or less. So that's, that's our game plan on this in a nutshell. Now, all these projects, you get out there and start moving dirt around, things can change, but, you know, right now, first, first look at it, we've looked at it pretty hard, because we know that there, that's a wet area out there, and we're very aware of it, so that's, that's our game plan at this point. I'll be happy to answer any questions and try to help, you know, understand what we're doing and our role in it, be glad to talk to you.
So, Lucas, explain for the folks in the audience tonight, as the engineer of this project, explain how, when you design a project like this, the water retention is designed not to do what?
We can't release, we, we have to give the water that is already going there to the downstream prop, that's just law, that we can't keep all the water on our upper side, we have to release it. We can't release that water at any rate faster, so when you cover the ground with concrete, same amount of rain falls and hits the ground, but it runs off a lot faster. So we have to catch it, hold it, and meter it at a rate the same as what it was doing when it was grass or dirt. So, right now, it runs about 3.9 acre-feet of water, so four acres a foot deep right now, today, before we even touch it. When we do the development and cover a maximum 75%, and that's another thing, we design these at 75% of that lot being covered. In reality, in 25 years of doing this, they fall out somewhere between 40 and 50%. So they're never at that max. I mean, every now and then you'll get somebody to build a swimming pool or accessory building, and you, you'll hit it on one lot, but never for the whole subdivision. So, we're designing it 75%, so there, there's a little factor of safety in there. So, if you cover 75% of that lot, the 30 acres, then it runs off at like 9.8 acre-feet of water. So we're holding a difference between the first one and the second one, which was about three and a half, four acre-feet, I think, of water. So, if we've got three acres in that top corner, we'll be, we build a berm two foot tall, and that holds equivalent to six acre-feet of water. If that, if that makes sense.
Yeah, if I could, let, let me ask Lucas a question. That, this concept of, of containing the runoff and not allowing it to be dispersed at greater volume or quantity than it is before development, is that a legal requirement?
Yes, sir.
And that's all calculated and designed as part of the, the engineering process of the subdivision as a whole?
Yes, sir. And it's, it's checked by county engineers, planning and zoning engineer. It gets checked by multiple different agencies, so it's, it's not just my stamp of approval, I'm responsible for it in the end, but multiple people look at it and verify what I'm saying will work based on, you know, the weather patterns we have and the soil types and all that good stuff for Warren County.
And that's part of the permitting process?
Yes, sir. Before they can move any dirt or grass, touch anything, that's part of the process that has to be verified and signed off on.
So, Lucas, let's say you do design this, and clearly, you're, you do this for a living, and I don't, and, and thank goodness there are people that do this. How does, how does anybody know that it was built to the specifications that you designed? Does somebody inspect that?
Yes, sir. We have to submit as-built. We show a design volume in the beginning of the project. Contractor builds it, we go out, shoot the contours again at the end of the project to verify that the two, that what they built meets our design criteria, either at a minimum or above, usually. We, we try to, we put some fluff in there in the front end just for contractor error and the tail end, so we're designing above and beyond in the front end, just to make sure that when they build it, there's no, there's no errors. And, and that gets checked again by planning and zoning, county engineers, everybody checks that again before the plaque can be recorded and before a home can be constructed.
Okay. So, so just to clarify, to your knowledge, one of the letters here, you, you spoke of a gentleman named Mr. Thompson.
Yes, sir.
As we sit here today, is Mr. Thompson experiencing any, experiencing any flooding problems, to your knowledge?
Not to my knowledge. I do remember that storm during the construction project.
So this was in 2018, roughly?
2018, I believe. Yes, sir.
So, 2018 to today?
I'm not aware of any, but I, I don't hear, a lot of times my number gets lost, but.
Let me ask the question differently. To your knowledge, the piece of property that you engineered, has it caused any flooding?
No, sir. Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
There were some concerns when we did the case, and I don't always hear them after, but the guy actually calls it, his yardage was better because of the project, but that's on the other side of the Thompsons, so I don't, I hadn't talked to Mr. Thompson since original flooding.
So, Lucas, what was the particular project that was constructed that, prior to the flooding, I guess, was it one of the subdivisions?
Yes, sir. It's that Royal Court there to the north on the screen.
Okay.
And you can see there's a little wet pond between us and Mr. Thompson's property there on the south side of Royal Court. Our, our storm sewer system is piped north, so we go from that pond to another wet pond to a ditch to an overflow that goes under Plano Road. So, at the night of the meeting, that's why I said, no water should come to your property, because it's all piped the other way, but it was a fluke. Storm, wettest, really wet February, and yes, I would never intentionally tell somebody that if I didn't honestly feel that way.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Lucas.
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, any other, hang on, Lucas, any other questions for Mr. Slavy? Ted, any other questions for you? All right. Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience tonight? You've heard the applicant's initial request. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that has a question? Yes, sir, if you'd come to the microphone. Each person has three minutes, and we'll be respectful of your time. Yes, sir. Your name?
Jamie Boosley, 3998 Dive Ford Road, also on the.
Dive Ford Road?
Dive Ford Road, also on the property directly behind that whole subdivision.
You swear to tell the truth? Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. Couple of things. One, I appreciate, I want to thank everybody for your time tonight. I'm not speaking up against the subdivision. I realize progressive and we got to build and I realize all that. But I do have a, have a concern because I don't have control of this uh screen, but all of the property by, at the, at the very left of what you're seeing there is uh, is my family owns. And I do appreciate everything that's been said that, that he's gonna keep that property dry on the 30 acres because he's gonna pipe all that water to the back. Well, guess what? All that water to the back's mine. And, and, and so, I mean, he, they just admitted that they're gonna put all the property back there. This has been, we've had this uh property since 1974. Uh it is agriculture land. We do have horses on there. We do have, uh I've had cows on there. Uh we do fishing. We do a lot of different things. Again, I'm not against the subdivision. I'm for growth. But I am very concerned about all this uh water that does have to go somewhere. If you uh, I can't.
But I think, but I think also what he said was there will not be any more runoff that will come on to other people's property than's coming today. That is, that, that's Lucas's job and, and before building permits or anything like that can be done, all that has to be engineered and calculated.
And, and, and again, I would like how you, how, I forgot which one of you said, how would we know that that is actually uh done until it, until it's done, until my land is, is, is flooded? I will also have to say the land, if you look to the north of the square, he said it hadn't flooded since 19, or since uh 2017, it floods every year. We could, we could ask Mark Thomas, the, the gentleman that farms the land, uh he has the, it floods every year. So I mean, I'm, I'm not telling anything false on this.
So I want to, I want to make sure I correct the record here. That, that isn't at all what I asked him. What I asked him is, has the property that you designed caused any flooding? Clearly this is wet property and he's aware of that, but uh I think what, what I asked him was, is the property that he designed, is that causing any flooding today? And that's different than what I think I heard you say.
The, the, the issue that I have is obviously if you're gonna build a subdivision on low ground, like you said, that has to be raised up in order those houses will flood. That, that water has to go somewhere. And I also, I think I remember you saying that you can only dig a pond so deep. That water therefore would then go on my property line. And if you'll look at the property line, and I don't have the soil thing in front of me. I've looked at it back when I was uh in college. But there is a wetland that's designated wetland and then part of the property is actually some of the best soil in Warren County. However, there is a part of that and there's supposed to be a natural, uh a natural drain to Dewey Lake. I may be talking, I'm, I'm getting older than, than I, than I possibly, but there's supposed to be a natural uh drain to Dewey Lake that actually goes from the back of my property. But everything I've heard, I'm not hearing anything, all I've heard him say, and I'm, I'm not, is hey, we're gonna push all that water to the back. How is my property where my horses, where my, where my dogs, where, where my son goes in place? Uh you know, I'm, I'm, I'm very concerned about our property. And uh, and, and also the property, I, I get we're gonna build a, I get, and I don't want my three minutes to run over, but uh I, I get you're gonna build a pond, but there's a lot of water out there and there's water standing. In fact, there could be water standing right now. I hadn't gone out there today. In fact, if you look in the back of that red, little red zone on the north side, there is a, there is a pond, you can't see it there, that there's a pond that has stayed there for the last 80 years. As far as I know, it's way before I get there. And that creeps out into that land uh every, every year. So again, physics in itself, if you build up to make sure that the, the subdivision is, is safe and doesn't get flooded, which I'm not opposed to the subdivision. I, I, I want to say that. But I don't want my land to be ruined any further than it is right now.
Thank you, sir. All right. We've talked about the water. I think the traffic report was uh in the initial staff report. Is there anything else, uh anybody else would like to add? Yes, sir. Something different?
Something different and to expand on his part. Yes, sir.
Okay, something different. How about that? Come up to the microphone, please, sir. And your name?
Jameson Wusley, 3998 Dive Ford Road. I do swear to tell the truth.
Thank you, sir.
So as far as some other things that are different, we've talked about water. A lot of, a lot of part of that is soil. So there is a website, Soil, Soil Survey. Approximately 40%, 5% of that land is either Lawrence silt loam or Robertson'sville silt loam, which is known to be poorly draining and have a shallow fragile pan. A lot of, and a lot of my concern is farmland typically they have lower compaction rates with development. It's gonna increase that compaction rate and that watershed as well as it's gonna have an impact on wildlife. So I would like, I would hopefully like a couple of things either discussed or put into motion on this uh proposed plan. So one thing that they could do is uh increase the lot size. So if they either increase the lot size or increase the space per lot, that's gonna create an area of undisturbed land to help hold that water better as well as it's gonna match the homes better. So the proposed density of that was 2.97. That also does have to take into account some of those farther lots up on that northwest corner as well as that drainage pond. So that does shrink down that lot size to right around that, I believe the minimum was 8,000 square foot. What it does connect to, Wyndham Way, there's also Hayden Heady Circle, Royal Court. Those lot sizes are right around 14,000 to 20,000 square foot, which is right around a third to a half an acre. I would propose adding in this document that a minimum lot size of 16,000 square foot be adopted. Another thing I'd like to do is um as far as trees. So one thing, there's a lot of wildlife in that area. They are impacted by those subdivisions. One thing that they are as or offering to put one hardwood tree. I would like to at least expand that to two hardwood trees per lot, if not more. That would help with the wildlife impact as far as clearing out a lot of that, those mature trees that are in the area. So giving the wildlife a home as well as helping the new development blend into the area.
All right, sir. Any, any other different points? We, you've talked about the wildlife, the drainage and the uh lot size and just, and the trees.
I believe I had one more just. Oh, the one more thing I did was the do not disturb buffer zone. So in this plan, it is recommended for 10 feet or minimum of 10 feet of do not disturb. I would like that expanded and that would help with the water push off. So it would be undisturbed. So kind of help contain that water as well as just not impacting the flood zones in that wildlife. And another thing I did want to address, as far as slab homes, we have discussed this property is a very wet property. Slab homes are known to have issues with flooding. So if there's some study that could be done to observe that, that would be great.
Sir, where, where, on this map, where do you live close to this?
We have that same property. Uh it's 414 Dive or Baldock Road. That horse barn.
I, I'm sorry, what?
He's my son. We joined all the back of that property.
It's the property to the west.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you. All right. So we, we've heard, thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Is there anybody else that, tonight that has uh different comments?
Yes.
Let the lady go first.
Okay.
I'll let you in. I'll always let you in because I know we gotta look out for you too.
All right. Yes, sir. Your name and address?
John Holloway, 3064 Plano Road.
Yes, sir, Mr. Holloway.
Property that's almost across the street from that.
Swear to tell the truth?
Yes, I did.
Thank you.
Couple of things. One, again, I'm not against subdivision and I'm with everybody else. I think those lot sizes, um I don't think they should be 1.7, 1.9 acre lots. Rest of the area is 3.8 to 4.7 to 5. I'm on larger property and I understand that. Uh there's a drainage easement between me and my neighbor. And just the other day, my backyard, my back part of my property and his yard floods. Significant runoff. I'm only on 4.6 acres. My front yard is super flat, just like across the street where he's gonna build, which I understand all that. I lived in that area for 24 years, driven out of that property for 23 years, every day going to work, watched how the characteristics of it is. I watch my front yard as the water runs through the ditches, cars lose traction through there. Um I'm just, I've got, my, my two new things are, I think the back corner of the lot where you guys are talking about a pond, I don't understand how you're gonna keep that rezoned or zoned as agriculture. There's no agriculture there. That's just runoff for residential property. I think that's wrong. Shouldn't go into the county math of how much agriculture's there. And why, and my other part is, you know, with all the other things, with the traffic flow out there. And then uh again, like I said, I think that, that should be not considered agriculture. I'm with this gentleman here with the trees. I have a lot of trees on my property. I don't see how you're gonna have any trees in that subdivision. If you're gonna have 75% coverage on a lot that size, it's gonna be just like the vineyards. It's gonna be a lot of cars in the street and it's gonna be a lot of house, a lot of yard and nothing there. And I'm not sure what the county, this is my question to you folks, is, you know, where do we think about that and why this needs to be a high density area? It's, it's ru, it was rural for years. Now we're looking at putting city houses. Is the septic system gonna handle all this runoff? Do we know that? How many gallons? And then when your, your project's finished, what's the next project? That the next piece of property that's gonna sell and you're gonna, gonna run into that? We haven't even got the road expanded or any of that kind of stuff done. There's so many needs for the county in that area that aren't even being addressed already and then we're gonna add more potential things later on. So that's just kind of what I wanted to share. Um I, I just think the county really needs to consider what they're trying to do out there. I think it's getting very crowded and why we need 89 homes. I took that property, I even considered buying that property. I'm not a developer, so I wouldn't need any other part of the money. But you know, nice, you know, half acre, third of an acre lots would have been really pretty on that. It'd be a nice subdivision and then people could have some trees and that kind of thing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Peggy Thompson, 2735 Plano Road. Uh my husband is Dwayne, and I do solemnly swear to tell the truth.
All right.
Uh my husband is Dwayne Thompson. Uh he is a critical heart patient. Could not be here tonight, but I've talked to Ben this afternoon and he has graciously agreed that my husband can speak from the home. And so I'm gonna get him on the phone and let him address.
Does he have something different than what we've talked about?
Yes, I'm sure there are things that he wants to.
He, is he listening tonight?
He was watching on uh.
All right. Mr. Peterson, how do we?
We're required, of course, as you all know, to provide the applicant and the opposition with a due process hearing. And so uh us, uh what I've told the staff and the staff to Mrs. Thompson is that if we can satisfy ourselves that in fact Dwayne Thompson is on the telephone and Ms. Thompson can verify that for us under oath. And as long as Mr. Pardue can have an opportunity to cross-examine Mr. Thompson after he speaks, um then in my opinion, um those due process requirements have been made, not just because it doesn't suit Mr. Thompson to be here tonight, but because he has a disability that prevents him from being here tonight. And in my opinion, that would um, that would be a reasonable accommodation for uh trying to provide Mr. Thompson an ability to testify in this public hearing and to uh compensate for his uh disability that prevents him from being here tonight. Before we started tonight, uh I told Mr. Pardue about that and I do not believe he has any objection to allowing Mr. Thompson to speak to you.
So how do we? How do we talk to Mr. Thompson?
I'm gonna, if it's permissible, I was gonna dial him on my cell phone.
All right. Yes, ma'am. He has three minutes.
Okay.
I'm here. Permissible, I was gonna dial him on my cell phone.
All right. Yes, ma'am. He has three minutes. He needs to turn down his uh speakers on the computer.
Turn.
He, there's a delay in between, so he needs to turn down the sound he's getting off of his computer so we don't get the feedback.
Mr. Thompson, can you hear us?
Sorry. So I don't need it on speaker?
You do need it.
No, you do need it.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, Mr. Thompson?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. This is the uh Planning Commission and uh your name is Dwayne Thompson. Do you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
All right, sir. You have three minutes. Thank you for your time.
Okay. I think you all kind of covered all of the water problems. Uh Mr. Slavely uh had promised me not one drop of water would run on me. And with 100 year back to back to back storms and I talked to the Western Meteorology Department and the worst we've had was a 50 year storm in 17. And right now, if you would come out here, there's water over on me right now. And that was the rain that we had this last week. But I won't cover any more of that. I've got uh some other questions. Uh there was not a traffic study required for this subdivision. Although I do have questions whether or not the Planning Commission staff realized that Mike Davenport's uh committee on um that he has a part of the planning and zoning on uh making sure that the zone changes and so forth are done. And he has approved for a 120 children daycare at Lifeway Church, which means there'll be another 120 vehicles on our road. And uh that was one of the things. Then we have uh Coca-Cola growing in within three miles of this subdivision and that will have at least 200 new employees. So we'll have 200 cars there getting on and off of I-165. So I think that the planning of, a traffic study really needs to be done. Uh the um the ditch that he's talking about digging in the back, unless you dig it to China, you won't ever get in all the water. And are you gonna require a fence to be put around this water hole in the area with a lock gate? I need your word and you promise me that no water will run onto my land at all. And will the staff have a checklist for items such as the mailbox with the water plants? The one next door to me did not have it. I had to call and they finally got a mailbox put up. I called the next time. I found a human bowel in one of my lanes back in my woods and I, they were coming over on to me to use the bathroom. So they finally got porta potties. And now they were supposed to put up a silk fence and that never happened. Another question I had was will there be a mailbox at each house? Or will there be one central location for the mail to be dropped off? And where will that location be? And I, I am a critical patient. My doctor really has talked to me about hospice. So I uh, I just have your consideration. I don't want sympathy. So I uh, does Mr. Ted have anything to say to me?
Uh no, sir. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. We, we, we've heard your, your request. You're talking about the water, the, the traffic study, the 120 students at the Lifeway Church preschool and a fence around the uh retention pond and the mail, the central mailbox. So thank you very much. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Hope you feel better. Okay.
And then I just had a couple of questions.
Okay, you got, you, you got about one minute.
Okay. Uh I'm just gonna do. Okay. Uh, I'm just gonna do highlights then. I'll do bullet points. The traffic study, the Plano School is already overcrowded, whereas, uh, we understood that the water was looking at one of our ponds on our property. So I don't know if that's in consideration or not for the drainage. Uh, the buffer zone, uh, is there gonna be privacy fencing between us and this development? Uh, we moved to the country, but the cities moved to us, is all I can say.
Thank you very much, Ms. Thompson. Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience tonight? Something different? All right, one more thing, one more item. Yes, sir, your name and address, please?
My name's Mark Jones. I live at twenty-seven Wyndham Way, which is adjacent to the property.
Mr. Jones, you swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Sorry. Uh, yeah, I live at the property adjacent to the, the area that's gonna be developed and, uh, one of my concerns is when I, what little I've looked at the map, it seems like it's one of the entrance ways or exit ways gonna tie into, I think it's Kendra Way. Uh, so they will come through, they'll have the option to come through Wyndham Way, uh, to, to, to get to their property. Uh, so on the lower end of Kendra Way, that, that road is already kind of damaged. So I'm wondering if that happens, is the county going to repair the roads in our subdivision? Um, you know, I've been out there thirty-two years, so I've seen corn over there, I've seen soybean. I mean, nice property, but it does kind of concern me that we are gonna have more traffic. Um, and I, anybody that's been in Plano, you know the roads aren't up to par. There are schools out there, the school's increasing, but yet still, when we develop, it, it seems as though the plan to have the road widen or straighten is never taken into consideration. So, this would be, uh, it's almost too late. I mean, Plano's just blooming, so I ask that y'all would consider that in the approval or non-approval of this project.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Rachel, would you talk about the connectivity of subdivisions to answer this gentleman's question?
Can you hear me now?
There we go.
Okay. Um, so our subdivision regulations, uh, required when Wyndham Estates was developed that if you're looking at the map, um, you can see that there's a stub-street connection to the property under your review this evening. And as a part of our subdivision regulations, any subsequent development of the adjacent parcels, so the parcel in red that's on the screen that you're reviewing this evening, would then be required to connect into that stub-street. Um, and so in, in the construction of the development, if this were to move forward, the applicant would have to supply roadway plans that our staff would review, um, and then may be able to speak more to this, but at some point there's gonna have to be a connection. Uh, I think you could see it in one of the photos. Um, so there's gonna be a gap between the existing pavement and where this property would tie in. So, any improvements that are made to that would be inspected as a part of the construction review process before the county could accept any of the streets within the neighborhood as a public street.
Explain why, explain why the connectivity is important.
So it's important for many reasons, actually. So, um, one thing we look at is just safety along our roadways in our community. So if there were, um, an accident that's blocking one of the entrances, um, and prevented people from getting in and out of the development, it just gives people more than one way in or out for safety purposes. It also, um, allows for better connectivity for, uh, school buses, snowplows, trash trucks. It's less miles traveled, um, out on the main roadway to where you're not having to enter one subdivision, go back out on the, the main road and then enter back into the adjacent subdivision. So those are some of the reasons why we have those connectivity requirements.
Thank you, Rachel.
And so one last follow-up question. Uh, the, so clearly you said this, the connection would be made and then this, this distance that you referred to would be repaired or a, a new road would be connected to, let's call it the old road or the existing road. Um, it's not within our power to, I, I think the other part of his question would be, would the old existing road get any upgrades? And I don't think that's the case, correct?
Correct. There are no planned improvements to Wyndham Way itself. Um, when the county reviewed this, had they, the Public Works Department, had they felt that this development was going to have an impact on that road that would require them to improve it or make repairs to that, they would've noted that during their preliminary review.
And so if that existing road, uh, I'm not sure what the issue is with it, but let's say it, I don't know, it's got potholes or something on it. Um, who would he contact? Contact his magistrate, maybe?
The County Public Works Department.
County Public Works, okay.
Um, would be a good place to start.
Okay. Uh, so, so Mr. Jones, hopefully that, that addresses the other question that you had with regard to the existing road. We don't have any jurisdiction over the existing road, but we do on, on the development portion of it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that has a question tonight or, uh, comment? Something different?
I have, uh, questions regarding some of the comments that were just made regarding safety, traffic.
Uh, I think we've, we, the, the warrant, the, they, the traffic study has been waived, so I, I think it's kind of a, not, not to try to...
Yes, sir, I understand. The, some of the comments were related to how the traffic is currently going and the safety, so I have some questions.
Okay, come on up. Or just one more comment and then... Yes, your name and address, please?
Rebecca Valentine, one-fifty Baldock Road.
Baldock Road. Okay.
It's behind Wyndham Estates.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Do I have to swear?
Swear to, yes, ma'am, thank you. Okay.
Yeah. So I apologize, I don't have any evidence or I didn't bring anything fairly new to this process and to Warren County, but having moved out to the area, I, I do have some concerns. Um, I went to go for a walk the other night, uh, from Baldock Road, so that's over by the Plano Store, um, was trying to walk towards the school and there's a sidewalk for just a small portion of that. Um, then you have to walk on people's land, uh, try to stay out of traffic. So with this new subdivision, division being proposed, how, when we talk about safety from a traffic perspective, from a people's perspective, how is the county proposing that, that we're maintaining that safety with all the additional cars on the road? Currently, when school's going in and out, cars are backed up, they're trying to pass each other. You're having to get a police officer out there or school resource officer, I'm not sure which, to try to direct traffic. It's dangerous. So how are we planning, or how is the county planning on, um, making it safe for everybody that lives out there?
That's not, that's not a question that we would take up. That would be a question for you to probably address with them.
I think that that's a fair statement. We rely on your team when you're planning these subdivisions and when you're planning estates, everything else out there, to take those things into consideration.
So, we do, and the fact that the traffic study was waived, so it tells us that they have checked that off and that is not something that we would take up.
I can, I can quickly, I'll quickly address some, some of your concerns. Uh, the, uh, the development tonight, so what they, what they review, uh, both staff and the Planning Commission, is the impact this eighty, potentially eighty-eight lot development would have on the traffic. Not all of the other problems that, that Plano Road has. Um, so that's, that's the simple answer. It can't be, uh, can't be all, uh, put on this one developer for building, wanting to build eighty-eight houses. Uh, the other piece of it is, there were some mentioned, parts mentioned about other new developments coming. Uh, Coca-Cola was mentioned. Uh, so when, with that plan was presented, there were significant traffic improvements that they, that were required and they committed to, including roundabouts, widening Plano Road, turn lanes, all of that stuff leading up to the interchange. Uh, and the transportation plan that generally the money flows from the state to the local, uh, local government. So Warren County in this case, uh, there is plan to widen and straighten out the S-curves there at Plano Road, which will include a roundabout. Uh, and then any of the, all of those improvements, uh, and probably longer-range plans, which we don't like to hear, uh, will include sidewalks and a shared-use path coming from Scottsville Road all the way to Plano, uh, Store, essentially. And then we want to put in a path or sidewalks back to the park as well. And then, of course, connect in our existing sidewalks. All those plans are in the works. They're just, can't all be done with one development proposal tonight.
Mr. Peterson, are they also putting sidewalks inside this development?
Correct, because we know the future, uh, future holds sidewalks on, on Plano Road. We, I see it. I live out that way, too. I deal with all of the traffic and the school traffic and all of that as well. Um, but, uh, you know, I constantly see people walking in the grass and all of that, too.
It's probably me most of the time.
All right, thank you, thank you so much. Okay, any, anyone else tonight, any other comments? Uh, is the APK here? The APK is here, excuse me. Anything else y'all would like to add? Okay. Commissioners, any other questions?
I have, Chair Warren, I have one other question. And with your permission and, and with approval of, uh, Attorney Pardue, I'd like to ask the engineer to come back up.
Yes, sir.
We heard earlier, um, you addressed the issue related to one client related to the runoff. And then we had another, uh, landlord come up and said the runoff is gonna impact them. How would we address the second impact?
So, we can, what, what, when I'm saying pond in this situation, normally we're, we're talking about a detention, a retention basin. So we have a, a sinkhole outlet. So we hold the water. It all goes down the sinkhole. Out here, uh, as the gentleman mentioned, there's a fragile pan. So we're dealing with a hard bottom that the water won't go through. So we're gonna, we'll have a wet pond back here. And our volume, our storm volume will be, there'll be a permanent pool that'll stay wet all the time, will be aerated, like the other two we've done out there. And that, they'll have an aeration system. So the hundred-year storm sets on top of that wet pond. So, we can discharge it and, and our intent and goal is to discharge it either his property, her property, in, in the directions it's going now at the same rate that it's going now. So there will be no increase in runoff to their property. I, I would love to be able to say, we'll send no, no water to them, but that's, in my understanding of the law, that's just as illegal as, you know, not holding it all back or sending more than we're supposed to. So, we'll, we'll, we'll create a wet pond and as far as where we put the outlet to that wet pond, and granted, you know, it'll be a meter trickle. There'll be evaporation and stuff going on during the summer months. It, it may never discharge. It'll happen during probably February and these, this time of year. But, again, that pond will fluctuate up and down. We'll send the water. And I'll be glad to meet Mr. Woosley or Ms. Thompson anywhere out there and we can talk about the best place to discharge it, but it would be a point discharge as opposed to, right now I think the water just collects and it just spreads out over the backs of all those fields. We're gonna hold it in a pond, uh, and we, we can control it because we, we have that, you know, the water kind of wrangled up there. We can send it and do with it whatever we want, but we will be required to not send it any faster than it's going now.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Rick. All right. Uh, Commissioners, any other questions? All right. Hearing no, we'll call for a motion, please.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Starks?
No.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Drain? Chair Warren?
Yes. The motion is approved and will, uh, final action in twenty-one days unless a request is made legislatively about him to hear the item. Thank you all for being here tonight. Our next item is twenty-twenty-four sixty-Z BG Home Pro Holdings LLC, care of Stephen Sutton and Mike Vitale, have filed an application for zoning three-quarters of an acre located on the west corner of Adam Street and East Thirteenth Avenue from light industrial to RM four multifamily residential with the general development plan. Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a pre-application meeting, uh, in October of last year for the property that you mentioned. There's an aerial view for your reference. The current zoning is light industrial. The current land use is vacant and the future land use is mixed-use residential. Do you have a couple of photos, um, of, of the property? Driven by there before, you might remember, uh, a couple of structures there, but... There's the site layout. And again, the applicants are proposing to rezone from light industrial to RM four, which is multifamily residential, in order to construct a maximum of twenty-four multifamily residential units on the property. They did supply a site plan for your reference. Looking down at the development history, uh, the Board of Adjustments did approve a variance for, um, the building setback along Adam Street and E, East Thirteenth Avenue in April for, um, what was a proposed commercial use. Um, so that variance is still applicable, uh, to this property for, for this. Looking at the bottom of the page, the staff has no deconsiderations relating to the proposed density and the lack of residential amenities. If we look over to page three, we can look into those in a little more detail. At the beginning, uh, top of page three, the surrounding density within a thousand feet of the, of the property densities range from zero to eighty-seven point seventy-nine dwelling units per acre. The average density is nine point nine four. The proposed density for this is thirty-one point three-five dwelling units per acre. There is more, that is more than one point five times the recommended density that's outlined in, uh, HN one-dash-two of the, uh, comp plan. However, there are properties within a thousand feet of the property that have higher densities, uh, than what is being proposed. The Planning Commission should determine if the proposed density is appropriate in this location and if it's compatible with the surrounding area. And then to address the amenities, if we look middle of the page under proposed open space, the minimum amount of open space required in the RM four zone is fifteen percent. Um, the applicants did agree to provide a minimum of twenty percent open space in their development plan condition number five. Um, however, there are no formal residential amenities that were planned to serve the proposed development. So with that being said, back to page one. Um, the proposal, uh, the proposal complies with the majority of the criteria assessed in the review process and is generally compatible with the surrounding area. Therefore, the staff recommendation is approval pending public hearing testimony and any discussion. All we have for a staff report, answering the questions.
Thank you, Amy. Commissioners, any questions for this request?
One, one quick one, Amy. Uh, help me understand how, uh, you said, I think I heard something about it's one point five times more than what's recommended, yet there is already another development that is close by that also exceeds that number.
Across the street.
Across the street. Um, there must be like really low, uh, density somewhere else, right? Uh, am, am I understanding that correctly? Either that or I was asleep in math class that day.
Yeah, if you, if you look at your land use map, um, in your packet on page nine, um, the higher density residential uses that are factored into that are gonna be on the southeast side of the railroad, um, closer to campus, some of the student housing that's there. And then, of course, on the northwest side of the railroad, you see all the yellow property, single-family. So those are gonna be the, the lower densities.
Got it, got it. Okay, makes, makes perfect sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Commissioners, any other questions? All right. Is there anyone in the audience tonight has, uh, opposition or questions to this request? Mr. Davenport, anything you want to add?
No, I think the only thing I would add to your point, Mr. Graham, I think this is a lesson in the difference between me, median, and mode. I'm not exactly sure how that's gonna work, but I do recall it was like three versions of average. I don't know which one we're using here, but we're using one of seven of them.
Did you learn that in law school?
I just work out, act like I work that way. Not how that answered a question you had.
Thank you, Chris. All right. Uh, Commissioners, no, there's no other questions? We'll call for a motion, please.
I'll make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and condition upon the general development plan, docket number twenty-two-four sixty-Z BG, based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing. The proposed zoning map amendment is... The proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted focused 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and actions, action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request that this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes.
Commissioner, do I call you? Okay. Commissioner Drain?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes, sir.
Chair Warren?
Yes, sir. The motion is approved, and it's a final action in 21 days unless the request is made to legislative body to hear the item. Our next meeting, then if I could go ahead and just mention this, is two weeks from today, and that will be our two Smiths Grove, or you go ahead.
One Smiths Grove now. We had one withdrawn Monday, late Monday, the Head Street one, and that will not be reheard. But we do have the other Smiths Grove one that will still require the five be present.
Okay, so Mr. Volker left, so our four county, Ms. Drain, Mr. Graham, Mr. Starks, and Volker, and then plus our Smiths Grove, will need to be there that night so that we have a quorum to vote on that item. And so we'll text Mr. Volker since he left. So everybody's shaking their heads, right, Rick?
I'll be there.
Ms. Drain? Tim?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you all so much for your service. Thank you, staff, for all you do, and anything else, Ben?
No, sir.
We stand adjourned, and see you all in a couple weeks.